We can call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stay standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Liz Rolk call, please.
Mayor Dickey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Charnow.
Here.
Councilmember Tollis.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Magazine.
Here.
Councilmember LaCron.
Present.
Councilmember Spelitch.
Present.
Thank you. Our first item, as always, is reports by the mayor, council members, and the town manager. I think I'll start with the town manager, if that's okay?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council. You probably are aware of this. I sent an email to the council and also Republic Services has tried to reach both their customers and also work and coordinate through Fountain Hills Times. Services, solid waste services as we know it will continue as planned with Republic Services, which is the town's solid waste hauler. They did notify us that due to concerns about the possible shutdown of the recycling facility where the recyclables from our town go and get processed, they are unable to maintain social distancing, the employees that work along conveyor belts. And so they are anticipating at any day that they are going to have to shut that service down. If that happens, then what's going to happen is that people are still going to, are still requested to go ahead and put their recyclables in their recycling bin, and they will go ahead, instead of taking it to the recycling center, it will go to the landfill. This is just a temporary situation, and it's not anticipated to last any longer until this crisis is done. There was a robocall that went out to some customers inadvertently. It was actually intended for some in California. And some customers may have received those, but then they went to undo what they had done. So that's item number one. The second item, wanted to also remind you that next Tuesday, a week from today, we're going to have our council budget workshop. And we're going to actually do that telephonically. So there's no need for you to be here, but we are going to provide you with all the presentation materials in advance, both hard copy and electronic. We are going to present it in the room here, and it will be televised as if you are here. And you will all be on the telephone like we have council members tonight. This is, we're right now getting into what healthcare folks are saying. We're at the, close to getting to the peak the next 10 to 14 days here in Arizona. So I think it's best for us to keep our social distancing from home as best we can. And it is very unusual going through this process like this, and I do apologize, but it's probably the best thing to do right now. The public will also, while our budget workshops have always been open to the public, it will be televised, but it's never been one where, with it being a workshop, our rules of procedure do not allow people to actually participate and engage and ask questions. However, they always have that opportunity to either email you or contact elected officials or the staff with any questions they may have. We will be sending out the instructions via email to you on how that's going to work, but I just want to let you know that that is a change in the process, and we'll be getting that word out to you in the next day or two. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Grady. As Carter, but I'm going to ask Liz to please talk a little bit about the upcoming election and then also in August and other things that we've been being asked about.
Okay. Wanted to remind everyone that May 19th is our special election. This will be an all male ballot election. The information pamphlets will be going out in the mail around April 15th. And I've also posted one online today on the town's website, so people can view it there as well. Ballots will be mailed out on April 22nd. And I would suggest if you haven't received either of those by the end of April, to contact my office. And for those that are interested in seeing if they're registered to vote, you can go online at maricopa.vote. It's all you have to put in the line, and that will take you to the county elections department. And the reason mainly that we brought this up was we've received a lot of calls recently about the signs going up in the rights of way and around town, and we just want people to know that whether you're for or against, those signs are permitted. We have very little ability to regulate signs other than for their size at this point. And so just wanted everyone to know that while you may not agree with it, that is basically what the law is at this point. And as far as election is related, August 4th will be our primary election. Yesterday was the deadline for filing for that. And we have one candidate for mayor, and that's Ginny Dickey, and three candidates for council member, Jerry Fidel, Sharon Blue Grisbowski, and Peggy McMahon. We have three seats open. And we've had people ask why we even need to hold an election, which is a very good question. But unfortunately, the state statutes require us to do that. And people are still able to run as a writing candidate, and the deadline for that is June 25th. And the one thing I did want to mention, on the primary ballot, if you are not registered as one, as a member of one of the recognized parties, you will need to call the county to request a ballot for the town election. Or if you want just a town ballot, or you can call them and ask for either the Republic or Democrat ballot. Otherwise, you won't be getting a ballot in the mail. So it's a very confusing process, but I want to remind everyone that if you're not a registered party member, that you'll need to contact the county, and all that information is on the town's website.
Thank you. So they're not going to send out little reminder cards to anybody this time?
They probably will.
Oh, good.
They usually send those out, I think, about 90 days before the election. So everybody should get a card in the mail and to remind you to call in.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mike?
Liz, just to clarify, so the special election in May, that ballot will go to everyone, regardless of party affiliation.
Yes.
I don't want people to confuse the second half of your explanation with the first. So just to clarify, everyone that's a registered voter, regardless of party affiliation or not, is going to receive the special election ballot.
That is correct. And they will not be forwarded. So if you're not going to be at your residence around the 22nd or a little after the 22nd of April, you need to call the county and let them know what address that should be sent to, because they won't forward ballots.
Thank you so much. The, we have reports by council members, and I wanted to ask all of you if you'd like to say something right now. It's kind of a good opportunity. I'm not sure if our next meetings will be like this, so if you have anything that you would like to say, you're certainly welcome to on anything. Yes, councilman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank all the healthcare workers, doctors and nurses, and everybody who's taken care of all these patients and treating everybody during this horrible time. As we all know, the coronavirus has basically crippled our economy. Restaurants and towns have been devastated, as well as most of the businesses in town. I'm trying to be measured in my response. First off, Grady, thank you very much for working the entire weekend, because I've talked to you more in five days than I've talked to you in the entire time I've been on the council. So I'm sorry for blowing your phone up, but residents have been calling all of us and emailing us and everything about issues that are going on with the town. Hats off to the restaurants that have been so compliant. A few needed some reminders of the executive order and complied immediately. One restaurant, who I'm not going to mention, your behavior during this time is unconscionable. The disrespect that the owner of this establishment has showed staff, as well as MCSO sheriff's deputies, is just mind boggling to me. I believe you've really damaged your reputation in this town, and I believe you owe the residents, as well as MCSO and staff members, an apology for the way that you've conducted yourself during this national crisis. My dad always told me that never have a policy of hooray for me and screw you. And so I'm trying to be measured in my response, because so many residents have reached out to me and talked to me about this. And it just boggles my mind during this time when everybody is hurting and everybody has taken substantial losses. Even if we don't own a business, we, our 401Ks have been decimated in our retirement accounts. So I just feel we should all band together during this time and not have the attitude of being above the law, above the executive order, and just comply. I believe I have a healthcare worker in my family, my wife, and we can get through this, but now is the most critical time. So I just had to get that off my chest, and thanks, Grady. Thanks, Captain Kratzler. Thanks for all the deputies that responded and have been enforcing this and everything. And I just, I feel that now is the time to come together, and thanks.
Thank you very much, councilman. Vice Mayor, did you have anything you'd like to say?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I made the mistake of getting on Facebook this afternoon, so probably, maybe I shouldn't have done that, but here goes. I just would urge everyone to just simply not panic, you know? Let's be kind, let's be considerate, let's not hoard anything, let's just remain calm and carry on, you know, just in kind of a social distance kind of a way. We don't need to live in fear out there, okay? I know it's difficult, but let's try to put others before yourself. Let's not overreact to what others are doing or not doing, but we should take necessary precautions during this difficult time in our culture. For many of us, it's a holy week, and it's Passover time for my Jewish friends, and Easter celebrations will be held worldwide by Christians on Sunday, albeit in a different manner to which we're accustomed. And so to me at least, Easter means hope amid all this chaos. We're suffering right now as a country, as a state, and as a community, but this too will end, and we are stronger together. Thank you, Councilman Spelitch, for your words. And so as Easter Sunday reminds us, there's always hope.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anybody on the phone like to say anything? No? Okay. As you can see, we're conducting a meeting again with very limited staff and council on the phone and such, but just to assure you that we're practicing the social distancing, or the, I like to call it, you know, it's more like physical distancing. I think we have masks, I have a painter's mask, and everything has been cleaned and sanitized, and there's barely anybody here, so we're doing what we need to do to keep us safe. We're going to continue to explore ways to have public engagement in these meetings as we move forward. As Grady was mentioning, we're going to have the budget workshop, and that'll be the same as usual for us all to watch. And please also look to the Times and to our website as we go forward, and if we have to have any kind of changes in our meetings going forward. The town of Fountain Hills, we had had our first proclamation of emergency on March 18th, and you may have heard or seen, of course, that we have released a second and a third proclamation, and that was in order to incorporate the terms of Governor Ducey's executive orders, particularly his recent changes in what was on that essential services list. And then on Saturday, the president declared a major disaster area for Arizona. Governor Ducey had requested that, and that came through. So our emergency declaration has those in there now, among other things. Also, it serves as a kind of a timeline, so if you want to take a look at it, it shows you what the federal government has done, what the state government has done, and what we have done, starting fairly early in March, so that you can kind of catch up. And that, again, you can get information about that with the Times and at our website, FH.AZ.gov and FHTimes.com. You'll see, if you look at those executive orders, that is very clearly states what is expected of us all, to keep the community and our state as safe as possible. And it also offers assistance for the economic struggles that people are going through now, and the Fountain Hills Chamber is also serving as a resource there, FountainHillsChamber.com. Governor Ducey's executive orders are Arizona law, and they're enforceable by municipal police and by our Maricopa County Sheriff's Department. And though, to be clear, the governor and all of us, it is our hope that once these folks are informed, whether it's businesses or people that aren't distancing at the parks and such, that the community members will show the care and concern for their neighbors, for our healthcare workers, as you mentioned, and our first responders by please following the recommendations and, in fact, the orders that are there, the rules. Staff and I, Grady and I, have had contact on almost daily with the governor's office. We were doing that for a couple of weeks every day. We've had state and local leaders reach out. We've had our U.S. senators on personal calls. They've been great, the county. They're all assisting with so many aspects of this pandemic, including supply chain, which touches on what you were talking about, Mike. We have the power to control this, there's not a food shortage. Please don't overbuy. Be aware that there are many people in our community that have trouble accessing food and medicine. I wanted to, I told Grady I wouldn't do this, but I'm going to. We have a few websites that have a lot of resources, so since some people aren't online and this is on TV, I wanted to just mention them for Channel 11 that way, and there's a couple of phone numbers, too. So Arizona Together is an initiative that's connecting individuals and businesses to resources, and that's arizonatogether.org, so that one's easy. Probably everybody knows this one, for Arizona's Public Health Information. It's AZDHS.gov, that's Department of Health, and Center for Disease Control, which is a federal level, is CDC.gov. The Arizona Commerce Authority has compiled resources for small businesses and workers and people trying to pay their rent and all sorts of those kind of things. Those are on AZCommerce.com. Last, I just wanted to give you these phone numbers, in case you're not online. So the county says that if you are a senior in need of immediate assistance, call this 24-hour senior helpline, 602-264-4357. And then this one is easy, because any Arizonan can call 211. And while there will be a lot on tape and such, if you call during business hours, you'll reach a live answer operator. So those are pretty helpful. The council and the staff and I are going to continue to keep you informed as we move through what everybody is sort of predicting are going to be the next couple of weeks, where it's just really important for us to take control of this and stay home, do the things that they're telling us to do. Some organizations are trying to do things that are a little bit fun to get you to stay connected. The Dark Skies, they did their Dark Skies Festival online, and that's still there, if you want to take a look at that. We're all seeing people singing and reading books to each other and even performing plays and such, and a lot of creative ways to help us reduce stress and, of course, stay together and connected with our friends and family, and otherwise interact until we get to emerge and see each other in person, which I hope will be very soon. So does anybody have anything to add?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mayor, something you said that triggered in my mind, that we really ought to ask the public to help the food bank as much as possible. People out there are really hurting, and anything we can do to help supply the food bank and get food and other necessities to them, I think would be very valuable.
Thank you. I'm so glad that you mentioned that. There's so many things that you don't even think about, like a friend of mine who has a special needs person who's, you know, been in a facility, and now they're not. And so even if you don't lose your job, you might have all of these hardships on trying to get to your job, and just, a lot of people are going through a lot of things right now. So having patience and doing the best we can with the situation, it's a new place for all of us, but we're on your side, we're on each other's side, and we will get through this. I'm confident of that. So on that note, if we could do the consent.
Hello? Hello? Mayor, you know, I'm listening to this, and something triggered me as well, and that is the comments, Councilman Spelitch did not name the business, and pretty harsh, whatever, what was said. And then you followed up in regards to the legalities and the enforceability. Would you just clarify for the citizens' understanding as to what you mean by that in regards to enforceability? And are people going to be arrested for certain violations of some sort of? It sounds to me like this is very close to, not close, from what I've heard so far, it seems to me that a lot of constitutional rights are very close to being compromised. And I'm just trying to get clarification as to this conversation, because it really sounds very, very harsh as to what was said. And I'm not aware of what incident and what we're referring to. Even on social media, I have not seen anything that would even constitute what was just discussed. So I just want to make sure everybody doesn't feel that something is grossly being, taken advantage of out here in our community, while we're trying to support these businesses the best we can.
Well, thanks. Our, Captain Kratzler's going to respond, but I also want to say that when we were on our calls with the governor's office, they cited the statutes and, again, the real push is for informing and educating and gentle, and that has worked so far on almost everyone. So, Captain?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Sorry, I did step out for a minute to use the restroom, so I did miss part of the comments about enforceability. But I can speak to Councilmember Tollis, some of what you asked. So the governor's executive order, there's obviously been a couple of them, but the one pertaining to restaurants is the executive order 2020-09, and that allows restaurants and food establishments to stay open for, to-go orders, curbside orders, or to pick up delivery. However, they cannot have onsite dining. And so that is clearly laid out in the 2020-09, that they cannot have onsite dining. So that's probably been the biggest challenge we faced in terms of patrons wanting to use patios or tables that are set up. And we definitely are approaching this with a educational first, second, and usually third. I mean, we're trying hard to push the educate and gain voluntary compliance. That's the key for us. That's been, the sheriff himself, Penzone, has pushed out to all of the patrol personnel that we want to educate and talk to folks and just try to, you know, inform them of how important it is to comply with the order. Now, this applies to individuals as well, the stay-at-home, stay-connected, stay-healthy order. There is an ARS code that was cited by the governor. We have talked to the Maricopa County Attorney's Office on it as well. It's Arizona Vice Statute 26-317. I don't have it here with me to read from, but basically it does require that people follow the orders that are pushed out by the governor in the time of an emergency. So, you know, could there be legal questions to that? I'm sure there are. I know that we've had those. You know, we're in uncharted territory ourselves. I've never had to worry about enforcing an executive order, but we're kind of learning as we go. We're trying to take the, like the mayor said, a soft approach and educate and talk to people, and I would say about 99% of people are receptive. They listen, they're willing to work with it and stay within the confines of the order. And I think most people, when you talk to them, understand that. Now, there is a provision in there in the ARS 26317, that if you violate that, it is a class one misdemeanor. So it does make it a criminal component to that if you violate that. So, and that's for an individual, that would apply for a business. So again, you know, there is an enforcement option there. It's our last resort. We're reserving those for maybe the most egregious situations, the patterned practice of complete disregard for the order, and it's nothing we want to do, and we're seeing most restaurants that we've talked to, when you explain it to them and talk to them about the health concerns, most of them understand and are willing to take measures to deter onsite dining. So do you have any follow-up questions for me on that?
Councilman?
Just a comment, and that is that while I'm aware of a specific problem that we had, which I think is fairly serious, overall, I'm finding that the restaurants really are following the rules, regulations, and the law. A lot of us are not home cooking every night, and so we go over to various restaurants, and they bring it to the curb, or you can stand outside and purchase through a window or whatever. And so I want to compliment the restaurants for handling this so well under dire circumstances. I can't tell you how badly I feel for the restaurants, but even more so for the servers and the kitchen staff and so on. I mean, we must be talking about hundreds and hundreds of people here in town who are getting no income, and people who rely on tips, clearly no tips of any kind. I also would urge the public, and I'm not in any way patting myself on the shoulder, but I'll say that when we do go to pick something up, I would urge people to give sizable tips, much more than usual, because most of us who are doing this can afford that, and some extra could really help some of these people.
Thank you, Ms.
Mayor.
Uh, yes, Art. Yes, Art, go ahead.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor, you know, this particular situation is very difficult on people and trying to allow people to go out and have some sort of recreation and walk in a park or sit at a park bench. I mean, I don't think that the executive order is intended to stop people from being able to go out and at least be out in the fresh air. And a lot of these restaurants do have outdoor patios. While they may not be serving on the outdoor patios, is there some way that we can carve out that if they're within the social distancing six feet, that people can still utilize seating and sit down and enjoy a cup of coffee out and about? Or are we subject to stay-at-home and, you know, you can go out and you can walk the park, but you have to go straight home? Help me understand your understanding of this law.
Okay. I don't know how far we can go with this, Aaron, and I'd like to, though, if we can, because it's even after that executive order about the restaurants, then they had the executive order about stay-at-home, which is going out to do certain things, doing it and going home. So even technically, and it's not, again, like you're going to run around, you know, going after people that are sitting on benches, but that is literally, we're trying to prevent the attraction for anybody to want to stay and gather anywhere until April 30th. So, but I don't want to answer, like, technically, maybe Captain Kratzler can add something to that.
I would kind of mirror what you said, Mayor, is that when we read the order and when we look at it and even the, some of the legal advice that's out there on this, there's not a whole lot, but I don't, I don't think there's much gray area in this. I know it doesn't address every single scenario or instance that could occur, but the order is what the order is titled, is stay-at-home order, and it outlines what the essential services, jobs, those essential things that you can do. And outside of those, there's not really any gray area for sitting out on a patio, having a cup of coffee at an establishment, even if you're practicing social distancing. So as hard as that is for humans that are social creatures, you know, we're trying to educate again, and we're asking that everybody do their part, and hopefully, you know, at the end of- do their part, and hopefully, you know, at the end of April, it's lifted, but until then, you know, we're pretty much trying to educate to the letter of the order and trying to encourage complete participation and compliance with it. So, we don't see law enforcement there being a lot of variation in that, but we're also not arresting anybody that I know of yet, or trying to, you know, we're not going out looking for someone that might be sitting on a park bench to run up and question them about what they're doing, we're just trying to kind of, you know, if we see something egregious, obviously we'll handle it, if we get calls for service, we have to handle those, but that's kind of the approach we're taking.
Thank you. Do you have anything that you'd like to add, Aaron? Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, I don't have much to add except to echo what Captain Crasser said and to emphasize that Executive Order 2020-09, in fact prohibits onsite dining. Under ARS Title 26, the governor has executive authority to issue that emergency executive order, and the residents of this state and the municipalities and counties within this state are bound by that executive order. So, is it within our discretion to be able to do anything about that, depending on your viewpoint, whether fortunately or unfortunately? No, it's not within the municipality's discretion to make an exception to that.
Thank you, Aaron, and just to put a period on it, when we had a call with the governor's office right after this kind of started, we literally asked that question, and the answer was no, you cannot, you can't sit at patios or anywhere close, you're just not really supposed to be lingering anywhere, and it's really difficult, and I understand that, but, you know, we do a lot of recognition for our soldiers and for people who give up so much of their lives for us, so they go overseas, they're far away, they're wearing clothes that we tell them to wear, they're cutting their hair the way they're told, and they're going places and eating things that they have no choice to do, but they do that because they think that they're doing a service, or they know that they're doing a service. And, you know, maybe it's been a long week, but when, I don't think that, I think that we're being asked to stay home until April 30th, and we can still go out and get our delicious food that we want, and we can get a margarita if we want, and we can go home and watch any movie we want, and we can be with our families, and I think that it's, if you think that you might save one person's life by doing that, isn't it worth it? And that's, you know, I'm just speaking from a week of getting a lot of input on a lot of different levels, and I think there are many, many people in this town that really want to be safe and they want to do the right thing, and we're trying to accommodate that. And whenever somebody contacts us and we tell MCSO, they are going on those calls because they're, because people are scared and they're asking us to do that, and I feel like this is a good way to help our community stay as safe as possible, and that's really our only aim here. And of course, afterwards, we have a lot to do, and we'll be talking about it in the budget, and when you talk about people that work in restaurants, there is relief coming from the federal government, whether, if they're on unemployment, they'll get some relief, and then even if they're not, there's checks coming, and there's a lot of relief from paying your rent and paying your mortgage and paying your taxes, you know, deadlines that are being moved, so, and I know it's an awful lot of information, it's not easy to get through, but I really hope that people avail themselves of some of these things that are there specifically, and they're, and it's from the federal government, the state government, and the county government, and everything that we can do too, to help keep everybody safe and get through this, and that's really our aim, and that's our only motivation. Yes, sir?
Mayor, no question about it, and I don't disagree with you in any respect, the analogy between soldiers and what we're dealing with right now, I think is a stretch, but I do understand what you're saying. My point was the six-foot distancing between people is what was part of the initiative, is the social distancing, so we have people in the park, we have people that are at park benches, we have people that are sitting around, my point was, is there any way that that's going to still be allowed, because really essentially what you're saying is the park should be closed too, and you either have it one way or you don't. So, right now, I think we're sending mixed messages with a lot of the businesses that are still open, that apparently aren't essential businesses, so I guess this never will be ultimately resolved unless there's a real crackdown, or somehow we get to an understanding that the six-foot social distancing is going to be acceptable. So, I was just trying to get clarification, because from most of the people I talked to, that's what they want, is clarification, is to help me understand, you know, I'm going to the grocery store, and there's hundreds of people there, and I'm six feet away, but I can't go walk on a state park, and I can't go in trails, and I can't, so there's a lot of confusion, and you don't have to answer, I know this is rhetorical, and I know we're dealing with a lot of uncharted territory, as we said, but hopefully it'll be over soon.
Thank you, Art. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go on to the consent agenda, please. Is everybody okay with leaving that on, everything on the consent agenda? Can I get a motion?
Move approval. Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, I think it's.
Unanimous?
Yeah, I could do a roll call, but I think we're good. On our regular agenda, we've got approving a cooperative purchase agreement for audio/video equipment. I want to just say straight off that we didn't get any speaker cards for any of these items, so we'll move ahead with that. Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, you recall that this item was discussed at considerable length at the council workshop last February. We're going to have our IT administrator come out and do a brief presentation on this item, Mr. Mike Chikarun.
Thanks, Grady.
Hi.
Good evening, and I'll try to be brief, I don't have a PowerPoint. The current audio/video equipment was installed in 2005 when Town Hall was constructed, the video production system, the cameras and whatnot, was installed in 2008, that includes three remotely controlled cameras with live broadcasts on television and web streaming capabilities. Over the past couple of years, we've had equipment failures, everything from the audio mixer, we've had issues with the video production system, also issues with the integrated control, as well as other hardware components, everything from video playback here in the room, issues with projector. Due to the age of the equipment, it's becoming challenging finding replacement components. I recently had to purchase a used VCR off of Amazon to basically pull apart for components to repair our existing equipment. That's not good, like I said, it's becoming a challenge finding even used hardware to repair our equipment. We've also received complaints from the public that attend meetings, as well as people watching at home, that it's difficult to hear sometimes, here are council members, here are presenters as well, it's also difficult to see the screen, some of those presentations are really hard to see for council members, as well as the public. And then, of course, posting videos online, if a meeting is, let's say, two to three hours long, it takes about two to three hours to encode that video, to be able to post online, and of course, that's done after or following a meeting, so there's a lot of extra work that has to be done. So, our proposal is to replace all of the existing audio/video equipment, so that means new microphones, new displays, they're going to rewire the existing speakers, there'll also be a new hearing assist system, and a new video production system with four high-definition cameras, and a new integrated controlled system. And then, of course, staff will be able to post those meetings within a couple minutes, following a meeting instead of hours. So needless to say, there'll be improved sound reinforcement and greater flexibility with the council chambers, we'll be able to set it up in different ways, and then, of course, for those attending meetings in person or by, you know, watching on TV or the web, they'll be able to hear and see those presentations better. So, the town received four proposals, three were based on a state cooperative contract, and we also received one from a vendor that the court uses for their technology needs. We also reached out to our licensing division and had them give us a list of licensed vendors or businesses here in town that did audio/video. Upon additional research, one actually moved out of town, so we didn't contact them, and the other one didn't return our calls or emails. So, if this contract is approved tonight, there's about an eight-week lead time for the vendor to receive, to purchase and receive the equipment, at which point they'll configure it in their office, test it, and then be able to bring it out to do the install, at which, during that time, they'll also install wiring for the new equipment, so that way they can basically just wheel out that new rack and install it. So, that brings us to about the beginning of June, with an installation targeted for kind of the middle of June, so we'll go, we'll start that install after that second council meeting. And that's my presentation, so we're recommending approval of the cooperative contract with Level 3 Audio Visual. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman?
Mike, do we have, will we have warranties on each component, or is there a warranty on the whole system? How does that work?
The system in total will have a one-year warranty, but each of those components have usually a one-year manufacturer warranty as well.
I know nothing about it, but it sounds awfully short. I mean, is that typical, just one year?
One year's, yeah, one year's typical on audio/video equipment, computers and whatnot. We do have the capability to purchase additional years. I didn't think that it was needed. Typically, you have equipment failures, 10, 15 years, kind of where we're at right now. Those first couple of years are fine, I think it's just extra money that we didn't need to pay out.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, how long has this business been in business and doing this type of service?
They are a national company, I don't have a date of how long they've been around, but it's been a while. They're definitely not new to the game.
And of course, I think everybody, every councilperson and the mayor are truly putting their faith in you, is there anything about this that you would want to do differently, or is this 100% the best quality and the best buy we can get?
I think for what we do in this room, this system will definitely take care of all of our needs for many years to come. I think it's a good proposal.
Well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the hard work you've gone to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes, Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. This was brought up during the budget meeting that we had over at the community center, and when it was brought up, Councilman Brown happened to be sitting next to me, and when the dollar amount was announced, I went on a whisper-laden, profanity-laced tirade about how much money it was and how stupid the idea was and everything, and then Councilman Brown said, David, this is needed, we've been promising this since I've been on the council, we owe it to the residents who cannot make the meetings, for them to be able to hear the meetings, and for it to be of quality and everything. So, Councilman Brown changed my outlook on this, so I just wanted to explain my vote, being a fiscal conservative that I am, and I vote for no for spending a dollar, and this is a lot of dollars. I believe you researched it well, and I, after listening to the elder councilman and talking to some residents, I tend to say that I think this is necessary.
Thank you. Anyone else on the phone have anything? Yes, yes, ma'am.
I think we're all in agreement, but I, when I first heard this, I look at this as a necessity, this is more like paying rent, gas, food, this is something that we have an obligation to have public meetings, and public meetings mean that people can hear us, see us, or whatever we have to offer. So, I think this is long overdue, and I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor, may I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
I approve the cooperative purchase agreement 2020-076 with Level 3 Audio Visual LLC, as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Our last item is about.
Thanks, Mike.
Oh, and thank you, Dennis, for convincing David.
You know, that's almost impossible at some point. David, I'm kidding you.
No, you're not.
Yes, I am.
We can go through that. Our next item is about lights at the fountain. Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. As the council's aware, the lighting of the fountain is aged, as basically all the infrastructure at the fountain is as well. Over the last few years, we've had a number of failures with the lighting system that we have out there. You're going to see a presentation tonight that's really, really going to be a little shocking in some ways, some of you have seen some of this, so for others, it won't be. I'm going to turn it over to Community Services Director Rachel Goodwin, who's going to go ahead and present.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello. Mayor and council, unlike Mike, I do have a presentation, or I do have a PowerPoint, because I think there's a lot of technical elements to what we're going to talk about, but I think the first opening slides sort of tell a big portion of tonight's story. So, as we talked about, we were talking about the lights on the fountain, just to clarify, these are not the ballard lights, these are not the pathway lights, this is not, these are the lights that actually light the physical fountain. So, just to get started, this is a picture of our fountain, it's pretty neat looking from above, I think, and you probably saw this at our budget retreat. This is a closer photo of our fountain, this is sort of down in the inner workings of the fountain. This kind of tells the story that we're in need of some repairs. You can kind of see around the perimeter there that the fountain was originally intended and designed for 22 lights, that is not the case now, that it has, that number has decreased over time. I don't know if it ever actually had 22 lights, but that is how it was designed. And this is a close-up of one of the existing lights out there, you can tell that it takes quite a bit of abuse on a day-to-day basis. So, currently, the lights for the fountain, the light, the fountain is lit by six base lights, so six of those 22 that we just looked at, and then 12 lights along the shoreline. Of these lights, three of the six base lights and one of the 12 shore lights are functional right now. So, what you see tonight when you go home, that's what you're seeing. That is actually recent, the, there was a failure of two of the bank lights just recently, actually, so that, it was previously three functional shoreline lights. Essentially, the failure's been happening over the last 18 to 24 months, about a year ago, we were asked to evaluate what we have and what would we recommend for replacement. Lights are metal halide technology, which is a bit dated, and they've just surpassed their life expectancy. So, that's kind of the boat we're in today. So, with Kevin really spearheading our efforts here, we did quite a bit of, about a year of research, we really put an emphasis on lights that need to be able to withstand the scale of conditions out there, the salinity, the corrosion, being submerged in water, as well as the force of the water impact. As we began this research, many vendors either declined, were unable, or unwilling to test their products with us to ensure that they meet these requirements. However, in August, so this passed in August, so this past August, we, we took three evenings, we did three evenings of testing out at the fountain. You might remember, you were probably contacted by residents. I believe it was even in the paper, if I recall. But that was us doing some testing to find out what we, what is, we were capable of doing. We were working with Consolidated Electrical Distributors, that's CED, Arizona Lighting Sales, and the manufacturer, WeF Lighting. So the testing allowed us to confirm that the hardware was compatible with the conditions out there, determine the number of LED lights needed, experiment with lighting angles, test LED color impacts and temperatures, and then evaluate the hardwiring and wireless components out there. So that's what we did over the summer. Resulting, this is kind of where we ended, we determined that four base lights and six shore lights would be sufficient to optimally light the fountain with LED technology. We could reduce the number of fixtures, as well as moving to LEDs, would really greatly reduce the operational cost of the lights on an annual basis. We reached out to Dark Skies to confirm that the guidelines for our ordinance can be met in both the light spill, or the light pollution, if you will, and the color temperature. And then we did confirm that LED color-changing features are feasible for our fountain. So the product that we are looking at tonight is through WeF Lighting. They are the only manufacturer that's employing a marine-grade alloy that's made to stand up to our conditions. The lighting components have a 25-year life expectancy. It's serviceable because they maintain a stock of components, and it has a proven efficiency of anywhere from 40 to 103% compared to other vendor-similar products. So a big question is, why now, and who supports the effort before us tonight? The timing of this replacement is really focused around the 50th anniversary of our fountain, which is this December. If this is a project we'd like to move forward on, we would like to begin to install this summer. Therefore, we would need to order parts as soon as possible. I mentioned that we did reach out to our Dark Skies. The Dark Skies Association wholeheartedly endorses this, as well as the 50th Celebration Committee. Due to the timing, we need at least 12 weeks, maybe more, to order the components. We don't know, based on the COVID-19 situation, how long it'll take to manufacture and get those, get the actual lights in, in hand. Funding for this project, we've earmarked a $50,000 unspent funding from the current CIP. So there's a project that did not move forward. That spending is, that budget authority is able to be applied to this purchase immediately. And then an additional 150 would be allocated potentially in the 2021 CIP, so the next budget year. So the additional funds would become available in July for the actual install, and that would complete the purchase, the installation, and make repairs to the grading in, in infrastructure that we saw in that photo. Now I do have, happy to answer any questions. If I can't answer them, Kevin Snipes, our park superintendent, is here, and we do have Kevin Rose on the line, who is with our manufacturer.
Oh, thank you. Any questions? Yes?
Thanks, Mayor. Not really a question, more of a, a comment. When the testing was going on, I received a call from a resident who, who was apoplectic that the fountain lights were purple. And I didn't believe her, so I got in the car and I drove to the fountain. I saw the lights were purple, and I called Rachel, and I said, Rachel, I go, the fountain lights are purple. And she said, Councilman Spelitch, you're very cheap, and we got a great deal on the lights, so enjoy the color. And there was silence, and I said, are you joking? And she goes, of course I'm joking, we're doing a test. So just, just a funny thing that, that she got me on. So you did a lot of research, and Kevin and Rachel, we appreciate it.
Thank you, councilman.
Too bad it wasn't April 1st, you know, it would have been, maybe it was an early joke. No, I think this is great. I think it's desperately needed and fits in perfectly with the anniversary and improvements we want to make at the park. And fountain is our centerpiece and our namesake, so we need to spiff it up a bit.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone on the phone? Thank you. Thank you, Rachel. Could I get a motion, please?
I'll move to approve a professional service agreement with Consolidated Electrical Distributors, contract number 2020-072.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Uno más. I'm not sure.
Aye.
Oh, there it was.
There we go.
Motion passes unanimously.
I guess they will have to do that mag trick and do the roll call votes. Thank you very much. Thanks for all your work on that. Council discussion direction to the town manager, anybody? No? Can I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.